Please note for the record that all commissioners are present. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
So move.
Okay, there is a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. The next item is the approval of the order of agenda.
So.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, thank you. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. The fourth item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. We have it bills. There are no employee status changes today. Some overtime. Does anybody want anything called?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Knopf. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is public health, the COVID data update. Mr. Doolitz, are you going to do that for us?
I'm up today.
All right, thank you very much.
Can we just zoom at that out here so I can see that? Yeah, that should get most of it. Chairwoman, you should remember of the members of the commission, I'm Michael Doolitz. With Grand Forks Public Health here to do a COVID data update. Next slide. So overall, what we're looking at was last week, there was a slight decrease in the overall number of cases, which was looking promising. Unfortunately, yesterday's COVID numbers kind of pointed things in the other direction. You know, upward a little bit. We saw an initial burst of a burst increase of vaccinations right after the boosters were approved. And now we're seeing your numbers. They went down a little bit, now they're back up. And we're starting to see deaths from the most recent outbreak of COVID. But we are on a downward trend with our our percent positivity. Next slide. Looking at the where the cases are happening right now. So there was a concern for a few weeks of an increasing number of cases in the elderly population, which unfortunately, the increasing number of cases in the elderly population, which is a very highly vaccinated population, did translate into some deaths unfortunately. But those, you know, those increases in cases in those groups have come down. You know, that it may coincide with the arrival of vaccination, but more likely it was just an outbreak spreading through a particular area in time. Early in the school year, we saw an increase in the in the student cases, so people of school age. Went down a little bit, now it's starting to head back up. You know, when I do kind of some subgroup analysis, looking at county schools versus Grand Forks School District. Of course, there's a lot fewer kids in the county schools than Grand Forks School District, but when you control her population, we see these kind of big, you know, big cycles of increases in cases, decrease in cases, increase, decrease in the county schools, whereas it's been a little bit more consistent with, consistent in the within people with Grand Forks city addresses, so presumably attending Grand Forks School District. Where it's been a little bit more steady rises and falls. That may be because there's spread happening in schools, that may also be because there's a lot more students in the Grand Forks School District, which helps kind of spread out a lot of that that data. And then it's been pretty consistent in the in the thirty to sixty age group, where we've been seeing a fair number of cases in those groups because they make up a large part of our population. Next slide. Comparing where we're at with our case rate to last year, what we're seeing is a more prolonged fall outbreak versus a tall peak. Again, I thought we were starting to point down with our with our overall case rate. I was getting pretty optimistic because we were at almost two weeks of consistently downward, downward facing case rates. But the 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 testing and the case rate has gone back up as of yesterday, this past weekend, unfortunately. Again, we're nowhere near where we were at last fall. So it's just kind of, you know, it's almost kind of painful in a way that it's just kind of prolonging out so far. But when we see big case rates prolonging out, that does decrease the impact on things like hospitals and stuff like that. Because we know when we see an increase in cases, we're going to also see an increase in hospitalization, the increase in deaths. Next slide. Comparing Grand Forks County to our pure counties throughout the state, the Burley Morton area was seeing a major peak in their COVID cases, which has since come down. Board and the overall state numbers peaked and were starting to come down. Where we are still seeing a lot of case activity is in Cass County. I haven't figured out a good way to explain the case activity, particularly groups and things like that. But they, it is corresponding with a decent number of hospitalizations as well. So that's the major spot of case activity right now, whereas a lot of what was happening before was on the western side of the state. Next slide. Looking at hospitalizations, the western side of the state again has traditionally been hit a lot harder with COVID-related hospitalizations. And that has extended out into this part of the state, impacting hospital capacity, not so much in Grand Forks, but particularly in Fargo. So Bismarck has peaked, Ward has has leveled off. Grand Forks fortunately has been seeing consistent decreases in our hospitalization rate. And that has also carried across to hospitalizations that that get reported up from all true every day. Next slide. Again, as I previously mentioned, what we see with outbreaks in cases is we see an increase in the case count. Then we see an increase in the hospitalizations, then we see an increase in the deaths. This has been no different. This outbreak has been no different. We're now seeing an increase in deaths with Grand Forks up to eighty-eight deaths. This is significantly lower in both rate and number than a lot of our pure communities. So we are still doing better than others, but you know, but there's also, you know, kind of consequences that happen when we see an increase in cases. We're going to see the impacts elsewhere. Next slide. Moving on to a little bit more positive topic, moving over to vaccination. Grand Forks did surpass the fifty percent point for vaccination. So when I look at the entire herd, so seventy-three thousand one hundred and seventy people in Grand Forks County, we are now across that fifty percent threshold, which is a huge positive. One reason why that's a huge positive is when we look at that nineteen to twenty-nine age group, they made up make up a large part of our population. But we aren't overly, or we can't be overly confident of what their vaccination rate is. We're thinking optimistically, you know, there could be a fair number of individuals that we aren't able to count that are coming from, say Minnesota or other states coming to U N D, getting counted in our census population, but not being counted for vaccination. So we may be higher than this, we may not be, but that does help overall. Next slide. Comparing Grand Forks County to our pure counties, again, looking at vaccination, we're second only to Cass County. It's significantly higher than the western side of the state and the state overall. We've made up a lot of ground in vaccination over the past, over about the past month and a half. Next slide. And then finally, looking at the the age groups of our of our vaccinated individuals. So looking at the vaccinated population each age group, there's a lot of bars on here, but it does kind of make sense. So it goes up, it starts at twelve to eighteen on the left side and goes up to eighty plus. And it starts with Ward County on the left side, Grand Forks is the second to last on there. So I I sorted this based off of the, based off of the vaccinated populations a few weeks ago in the younger age groups, and so that's why it starts off with Ward. What we're seeing again is a difference, a significant difference between the western side of the state and the eastern side of the state, particularly in younger age groups, where the vaccination rate is significantly lower. And that does, is hitting overall, especially the nineteen to twenty-nine age group, our overall vaccination rate in those areas. We're still doing really good with older populations and I do, I do have a lot of confidence knowing that that the thirty to sixty age group is highly vaccinated at Grand Forks County as well. Next slide. So our bottom line, we're doing really good on, or we're making up a lot of progress on vaccination right now. We hit above that fifty percent rate. Our older population, they're doing well. We're also seeing good, you know, a good number of people coming out for boosters. We aren't seeing anywhere near the outbreak that we saw last year. It's it's kind of long and drawn out. But that is good for hospital capacity and things like that. Of course, we don't want to see a lot of cases, but this is better than seeing a peak, obviously. Now, we are starting to see deaths, so it's following a similar trend as what we saw previously before the vaccine. It's just the the scope is not nearly as high. Our opportunities, the biggest opportunity that we have right now is the Pfizer Emergency Use Authorization for the five to eleven age group. That's going to give us another, you know, another five to ten thousand people that will be able to vaccinate, which will help with reaching our herd immunity. And then our threats, we still don't, you know, we still don't know what's going to happen towards the end of the year with our case count. And the increase in COVID deaths in the highly vaccinated age groups is certainly a cause for concern as well. We're focusing on protecting the elderly. With that, I am open to any questions. And you probably got here today, the longer version of this.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Doolitz? I have a different question. Okay. Do you have any idea with Pfizer approving the five to eleven-year-olds now to get to get the vaccination? Are they going to be done primarily at public health and at a site? Or are they going to try to, are you going to try to go into the schools to do that?
Chairwoman, you shall actually defer to Debbie for that.
And Chair members of the commission, that's a good question. I do believe that we'll see a combination of things. We have heard that some of the schools are reluctant to have vaccination programs in their schools. So unlike our flu efforts and other vaccines, we may not see a large number of children being vaccinated in schools. We will however encourage vaccinations at our sites, which will include both our office and our site at the Grand City Mall. And then of course, primary care physicians, pediatricians, family practice doctors will do a large number of this. We likely won't see children being vaccinated at pharmacies, and pharmacies played a huge role in vaccinating adults. And some of that's related to their comfort level and their laws related to what ages they can vaccinate. We have received notification of a very small allocation to begin, but we won't begin to use that allocation until all the final approvals from the CDC and the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices have been established. But the vaccine will be in place and ready to use when when we can.
Any other questions? The bummer, because it's just schools since five to eleven-year-olds are there, I thought, line them up. That's what they did when I was a kid. I don't even know if my parents had to sign off for that vaccination. You just went to the cafeteria and got in line. So it's unfortunate. Well, okay, I'm old. Good work, Bill. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is the city township hearing on minimum sales price. Quick speak on behalf of the minimum sales price. Anybody here want to speak on the township or in the city in Grand Forks County?
If not, I recommend the board approve the prices and set the property sale for November sixteen, twenty twenty-one at two P M. in the county commission room, county office building. Terms of the sale are captured, check on.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Knopf.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is county engineer. Mr. West, I believe you want to talk about excavator bid.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Last week, we took bids for an excavator, if you had new piece of equipment for our department, in an effort to increase production and get more COVID work done. We're hoping to add this piece of equipment. And one thing I want to make this before we're aware of is we will probably hire contractors a little less, but we would still hire them. Because there isn't an excavator alter that would do all of our work for us. We would still have, you know, if we got a really big project, we'd hire a bigger excavator. If you need a little mini, we would still hire that one. But this is a good medium size for us. We think we'd do the bulk of our work. Bids were taken last week. It was an uneventful bid opening, which is good. All the bonds are in place. I have them here with me. The results are in front of you. We also did a trailer as well to to pull it. The, I think there's two prudent options for us, depending on how that is looked at. The low price machine upfront cost that would meet the spec would be the Deuce on DX one E option. If we consider a guaranteed buyback option, a five-year, three-thousand-dollar buyback, and factoring that in, the John Deere one sixty model would be the net low bid price if that were considered. The the buyback is something we do that, for lack of better words, if we were to get a lemon, so to speak, that we would have something to fall back on and and that is one option to to sell the PC equipment later. Not that we have to, it doesn't bite us into having to sell it back in five years, but it is a representation of how the manufacturer and industry would value that PC equipment later. So there's there's two options there. I did recommend the John Deere option as in the long run, we will sell that PC equipment eventually. Is it five years? Don't know, don't know what the future holds, but we were in the same situation in two thousand fifteen when we bought a wheel loader. And that was the rationale we took at that time was we factored in the guarantee buyback. As far as the trailer goes, that was very straightforward. The full master model from R D O is the little bit. And I think that one is pretty clear as far as recommendation. Yeah, that's my recommendation on the PC equipment.
Okay.
No discussion.
No discussion. Okay, are you ready to make a bit of motion?
Yes, I recommend approval of the early engineers recommendations by the John Deere one sixty GLC excavator and the Toma Master T fifty T trade.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in place and a second. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote, oh, sorry, I do. So.
Nick and I have talked about this already, and so, but I wanted to bring it up here as well. Because I struggled a little bit with not going with lowest bid. And when I, and that's the idea behind doing bids, right? You know, you get comparable equipment and whatever the price is. And so when I looked at, you know, the R D O, and it's got nothing to do with either of the companies or anything like that. I'm just focusing on the equipment. And and so, you know, the R D O excavator, we're looking at a hundred and eighty-five thousand roughly, and Ironhide, a hundred and fifty-five thousand. But just going with that alone, we're saving thirty thousand dollars by going with Ironhide. And and so I asked Nick about the buyback, what, you know, what does that mean? And basically, it's the trade-in. But my also, my question was, is that, you know, how long do excavators last? You know, if you take good care of them. And I don't know that we ever talked about a number of years or anything like that. But again, assuming that it's taken good care of and it's not being, and again, it's not being used on big projects. It's your small or your medium-sized projects, that sort of thing. But I guess the reason for, you know, I'm still concerned about the reason for not taking the low bid. And I know that, you know, the guaranteed buyback has entered into this. But what's the chances of us buying it back or selling it in five years? You know, where we would get that, you know, and so I'm looking at thirty thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. And, you know, if you look at at R D O and Ironhide, low bid is is Ironhide. And again, just looking at the equipment and nothing more beyond that. I just said, but I'm keeping my notes here, but again, I don't think if if we don't trade in five years, there's a chance that a hundred and ninety-seven. I mean, there's, you know, and I know that that, you know, the comment about, you know, if we get a lemon. But if we get a lemon, we also have a warranty, do we not?
We do. The, I did spec a five-year or three-thousand-hour full machine warranty for that type of grant.
So I guess, you know, I just, for me, and and we again talked about that, but I can't support me paying thirty thousand more for the excavator when there's a warranty and chances are we wouldn't be trading it in in five years anyhow. And so I I personally can't support it. I could support, you know, going with with Iron, Ironhide. I have a hard time with that name, speaking that in mind. You know, and and doing the trailer with the other company. But it just seems out of balance and it, to me, it contradicts what what we're trying to do with low bids. And with looking at all these ifs, well, we don't know what those ifs are going to be. And we do have protections with warranties. So that's my, that's my only comment.
Thank you for your comment.
I have a question. First of all, I see with the buyback on the DX one eight, the Ironhide product would be only, be less than half. And the John Deere one would be more, more than that, sixty percent. I'm not sure what the numbers are. Why didn't you start using, factoring that buyback into some of the purchases? I don't recall seeing most of the smaller. How long have you been doing it that way? And how has it paid off for you?
The, the only other PC, well, motor grinders we lease, so we we don't do that. The trucks we recently bought, we bought off state bid. That was enough specific solicitation. We did this on our two thousand fifteen, the wheel loader. That was, we we kept it. It was with the machine and it's been working well for us. We cut that Caterpillar loader. Trying to think if we did it on our tractors. I can't.
Have you had to return one?
Have not. I have not yet. Part of all the recommendation is is also with our known service of with R D O and our motor graders we have, which is quite substantial contract for us. They provided very good service and we know that's good service. And and to be frank, when we first got those motor graders, they were in the shop that first year or two, a little more than ideal. And but the service was good and they worked through it and got us the parts and you know, that plays in my recommendation a little bit too. And I'm not saying Ironhide wouldn't do that. The only PC equipment we have with them is our one skis gear. It's been a minor, smaller item for us. So, yeah.
I could understand if it was closer, but thirty thousand dollars is a lot. And, you know, we don't have, we haven't had any. So I I guess I just have a hard time justifying that to iron, is it ironhide? And anybody else, if they've made a bid and it's a low bid and it's a comparable machine, we're protected. We've got a warranty. Chances are, we aren't going to trade it. So that's my position. Like, I can't support the recommendation as is.
Mr. West, where is Ironhide located? Are they here in town?
Yes, the Bobcat dealer.
Okay, oh, heavy too, okay. And Deuce on, is that American-made or is that come from somewhere else?
Korea.
Or where, Korea?
I don't know.
You just said Korea.
One more thing, I mean, with with going with I, I, we can have that machine in December roughly, but for this next coming season. Whereas with the other company, we're looking at eleven months from now, maybe. Give or take, but that's what they're suggesting is December or September of.
And I mentioned to Nick that if lead time was an issue, we can pull something from our inventory that we have on order that would fit the build codes that the county requested. So we could have something in the spring also.
R D O.
Yeah, that's your question.
I I did talk to Nick this morning about this.
Part of the things that, you know, obviously, there is a difference in the buy purchase price. Whether we trade them in or not, the trade-in value, I think, means something. You have to look at a trade-in value of Caterpillar and John Deere, which are more predominantly in the excavator market, I would say, as compared to Deuce on. Granted, in the past, they haven't maybe had many troubles with Bobcat. And this is coming from personal experience, probably from the farm. You start, you start using heavy-duty equipment such as that, parts meaning means something, whether they carry the parts or not. You can get John Deere parts, you can get Caterpillar parts fairly easy. Not even, COVID was an issue. I do understand when you're starting to look at the equipment that's coming from outside of the country. Just because they sell it doesn't mean they have the parts in stock for it. That's something to consider. And also the the trade-in value. It means that it lasts longer and the quality is higher. So I'm not saying that to persuade the the commission. I'm just saying, when you look at the make and model of something, these these machines are used heavily. They're not just doing a little job. They're digging, they're, you don't know when there's a rock down there. You don't know what you're going to hit. Certainly where I live, nine times out of ten, you make a dig, you're going to hit rock. And it's going to be granite, because that's where I live. And nine times out of ten, when we hire a contractor to come out to our farm to dig rocks, that's what they hit. And they, they, they're tough on the machines. They're very tough on the machines. You don't, and I'm not saying that Deuce on isn't a good competitor, but what they bring to our farm, when we want contract work done, they bring Caterpillar, John. Because I don't know if Deuce on can handle it. And I'm not saying that because I know them firsthand, but I know what they show up with. Just just a point of reference, when you're using heavy-duty equipment like this, you put them through heavy-duty work.
I I don't disagree with anything that you've said, and I I don't know one company. I know that with R D O, we've got a good working relationship and they stand behind your party and all this other stuff, but. working relationship and they stand behind your body and all this other stuff, but again, for thirty thousand dollars and again, assuming that it's a comparable machine. I just, that's where I'm coming from as well. So whatever the board decides is fine.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. And a second, correct. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and motion is carried with a vote of four to one. Okay, Mr. West, did you have anything else for us?
Well, just a few tidbits for the board. Gerald Sieg is retiring at the end of the year. So that's fifty-nine years and two months, coming, leaving us and so that's a sad day, I guess. Good, good for him. Good for him. He, he told me on Thursday and publicly announced it to the crew yesterday and came to work today with a smile on his face, so that's good for him. But yeah, we'll be looking for a replacement and posting that in journal pretty soon here and moving on, but it's a big issue.
A lot of experience goes out the door.
Yeah, it's, it, that's gonna be rough, I think. We'll manage, we'll be good. Our paid-in-job bids in a couple of weeks, so we'll see where that comes in for next year and consciously optimistic oil prices aren't too high on us. If, maybe you've noticed some of our intersection lighting, intersection lighting finally got energized here last week. Some of them are up, some of them aren't yet, but those, the luminaires were on back order and the wood poles were sitting out there all summer, but we finally got the luminaires in off the bolt off. Port of Los Angeles, I suppose, but. Let's see, what else? We're going along with business as usual, so any other questions for me?
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is premium pay.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, the, the commission had asked, or directed Ms. Steele and I to look into premium pay leveraging American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And this is identified as premium pay. It's, it's very important, just for this discussion, to distinguish that this is not hazard pay. This is what's defined as premium pay. And it's, it's for employees who could not work remotely, who did not have the option to work remotely. And they had to have consistent contact with the public and have an increased risk of COVID-19 spread. And so using the criteria in the interim final rule, Ms. Steele and I had quite a few meetings, quite a few discussions to try to come up with a good plan, a solid plan for the commission to review. And with that, I can't tell, I think if Ms. Steele is there, I'll just turn it over to her to present the plan to the commission, if that's all right.
Ms. Steele is here, thank you, Mr. Ford.
Chair Peach and Commissioners, I did send a summary that came in your packet that kind of explains the methodology and, and compensation pieces that we came up with. I did a very, very brief snippet of some of the definition pieces. If you want, you can read the hundred and fifty-some pages. But specifically, the departments that are covered are Public Health and Public Safety, Custodians, Sanitation, Emergency Management and Corrections, and Corrections would also include Juvenile Detention. So what we are looking at is this premium pay would fall under the expenditure cavity category of four, four point one. We're looking for active employment on the date that the commission would approve the premium pay. Our identification is that Tom and I went through every, every position in each department. We had to identify whether or not they fit in those major categories and then whether or not there was remote work that could have been available or if they fit into many of the other subcategories. We determined to look at a ten-month eligibility period covering July first of twenty twenty through April thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. I had an explanation that, you know, we were looking at when reports of positive test results and increases in both the county as a whole and what we had from our employee population specifically started to increase and impacting the employees in those qualifying categories. April thirtieth was when we saw a steady decrease in positive test results and illness as well as less reports for the need of ABP tape with the employees. The COVID-19 vaccinations were widely available and provided through Public Health starting in February of twenty twenty-one and several vaccination events had been held at Correctional Center for Law Enforcement. The compensation that we looked at in working with Commissioner Falk was a maximum of two thousand dollars, which fit, which fits within our criteria for any individual working all ten months. And the information was, we went through and looked at every person and how many months did they work? We also determined to use fifty percent of that for part-time employees because they don't work as many hours. We chose not to look at risk because it's too hard to determine if a, I'll use Correctional Center as an example. You can't really say that a correctional officer has more risk than a corporal or a corporal and a sergeant, those types of things. So we determined that it was much easier to look at the dollar amount. And so all of this fits within the, the criteria. We're not bringing anyone to more than thirteen dollars an hour of additional wages, no one would backs out over twenty-five thousand dollars per individual and it will not exceed a hundred and fifty percent of the residing state's average annual wage. We went to department heads and asked questions regarding positions that we were unsure of because both Mr. Ford and I know that we may know a lot about what people do, we don't know the day-to-day that they do. So we do have, the estimated cost that I provided to you in the summary was two hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred dollars. It has been recalculated because we've determined that there are some people who either didn't have, they didn't meet the qualifications per, put from their department or they're no longer actively employed. So the new number that we have is two hundred sixty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. So what we're asking is if this meets your approval or if you have any questions, so please let us know and decide, you know, how would you like to move forward. We would look to pay this on a separate payroll so that it would lessen the tax impact to the employees and also will make it cleaner, easier. And it does include Public Health employees and we have been in contact with the city on what that would look like. Mr. Ford's had those numbers. So I'll stand for any questions that anyone has. Yes.
I, I don't think we should mislead employees. It's not gonna affect their taxes or lessen their taxes because it goes on top of their gross or adjusted gross, however it's reported. So it will be the same tax, it may be slightly less, but in the end, they're gonna be taxed appropriately.
Correct. It just, they'll be less taken out of that chunk of money because it will not look like it's bumping them to the next tax bracket.
Right, but it's, it could.
Right. And the way that the tax works now, it looks at what you pay at that one right time and it assumes you're gonna have that same-sized paycheck through the rest of the year. So that was the, the thought process around having it cut as a separate.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Steele? Okay, what are the wishes of the commission?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the recommendation from the committee. And I'd just like to comment, you know, that no amount will ever compensate our employees for the work they did or the risk they did. This is just, in my mind, a recognition that they were, they worked over and above the law. And, you know, there are a lot of people in our community that did that work and unfortunately, they probably won't fall within any of these criteria and won't get any financial compensation for it. So I think it was, it's, it's a, it's a reasonable amount for them and I hope they take it as such and my motion is to, to approve it. Thank you.
And is, okay, and is it to approve it at the estimated cost of two hundred sixty-eight thousand six hundred dollars?
Yeah, and I think that they could come back to us, that's gonna be a floating number because we'll end up with somebody missed or someone we paid, so that'll float.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Madam Chair, do we have a date when this is going to be held?
Oh, we helped our shore to be able. We could, I mean, we could do it after the November fifteenth payroll, it could be processed right after that.
Yeah, oh yeah, as soon, as soon as we can.
And that's okay too. And Mr. Sheriff Schneider, you're waving your hand.
If, if you'll take comment.
Sure.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I just wanted to make a brief comment that I did have a conversation with Ms. Steele and Mr. Ford over, over email, inquiring about support staff. I understand that they're not responding to calls for service, they're not law enforcement, emergency personnel, but the sheriff's office was open the entire time, including support staff, they were not able to work from home. And I asked if they would be considered for the, for the essential pay. Some of our duties include fingerprinting that did take place during this. There's no way that you can put partitions between employees and hands. I mean, we got gloves and masks. As I'm sure Ms. Swanson will tell you, there's only so much that'll protect you from that. That is something we did on a daily basis. Part of that timeframe, I believe, the county office was closed. Those people were all coming to the sheriff's office for us to take money, mail, ask questions, whatever it may be. Where I'm going is that our, my support staff had constant contact with the public through this timeframe. Mr. Ford did respond in an email stating that they had considered it, but something along the lines of partitions, et cetera. Well, we don't have, as soon as we open the door, the partition's gone. I'm sure all of you know what it's like to talk through a mask, through a, a glass partition or through a mask, through a phone, it doesn't always work. We take eviction papers, we need to get payment on that. There is hand-to-hand exchanges, we're serving civil papers, our support staff is, they're releasing documents, they're releasing reports for crashes or whoever comes in and requests them. They're processing people in order to interview them, have them in person. What I'm saying is that they've had plenty of contact and I just wanted to bring that to the commission's attention that, in my opinion, I feel that they would be fit, well, if it was allowed by the, the COVID money and whatever aspect of help.
Ms. Steele, was there anything in the definition or in the funding that specifically stated who was qualified for those funds?
So Chair Peach and Fishers, there's a lot of detail and the administrative pieces that Sheriff Schneider is talking about to be tackled. Because the building was open to the public, it's not, doesn't meet down to the granular level. The, all of the direction that we've had was the, there was supposed to be a concerted effort to have people working remotely as much as possible. I do understand his concerns. If you wish for us to research this further, you could do that. It doesn't, with all the research that Mr. Ford and I did, they would not qualify. And I know that it's not ideal. Unfortunately, I get where he's coming from. And, you know, when we have additional other departments where they still had, you know, contact with the public and, and pieces along that, that line, you know. I get, I totally get where Sheriff Schneider's coming from, but I, we weren't able to determine how we could make it fit within the guidelines of our.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from, I'm not disagreeing with you. The question is, are, are there, were there people in the, like, Public Health Administrative Department that didn't qualify for this also?
So Commissioner Falk, we did, I did work with Ms. Swanson and she identified and removed some people from the list because all we had was a listing of people who did not have that type of COVID response.
So there are some.
Response to, yeah, there are some other departments and other positions within departments.
The sheriff's department, they're not qualified also.
You know, I, I concur with Andy. I was up there many times myself, but there's a lot of interaction with attorneys, people coming in, warrants, all kinds of things where the administrative staff gets involved with these people. And I agree with, with Andy that, you know, they worked every day. They were not working remotely. They can't work remotely because of the warrants and civil papers and this stuff cannot be done from home. They are at the office and they are having a lot of interaction with the public, so I agree with them wholeheartedly.
My question to Sheriff Snyder, how many people would this be?
Six.
And to Ms. Steele, why are, why would custodians and sanitation workers be more risk than the people who need to face them with?
So custodians and sanitation workers are directly identified in ARPA as being qualified because anytime, let's, we'll use this building as an example. Yes, the building was closed. However, that did not mean that people were not in the building and Northeast Human Services saw clients as well as we had foster families that came in for visitations. The custodial staff, because they were responsible to sanitize everything, because they were responsible, if someone tested positive in an office, they had to go and clean that office. All of those pieces is identified through the guidance on ARPA that they are considered very solidly to be covered.
With respect to the public health personnel who were removed from the list, but all the other ones, the, how, how many people in the department were paid approximately?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Doesn't matter.
Approximately how many people in your department were on that list to be paid?
Oh, I believe we removed about five and it was due to, mostly they were no longer employed.
Right.
We did have a few administrative staff on there, but they worked at vaccination clinics with the public. They were at the Alara Center doing vaccines.
I don't see much difference between someone working at a vaccination bank who would be getting some of the funds and the people in the sheriff's office. It strikes me that these six people who are interacting because they can't work at home, I don't wanna open the floodgates to everybody in the valley, but that, these, these particular jobs, I think to me, we should just keep moving.
And Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, there's a difference between should be and what is under the guidelines of, of the interim final rule. Ms. Steele and I, we did everything we could to try to get everybody something. But we had to go off of what's outlined in the interim final rule. And that, that's different than what people should or, or what they deserve and what's outlined. My recommendation to the board is, and this isn't Ms. Steele and I trying to play favorites here. We're just following the guideline and what's outlined in the, the rule. So my recommendation, and that's what I, I tried to explain to Mr. Burkholder, to the sheriff, is we're just going off of what the guidelines are. And custodians and facilities are specifically identified and referred to in the interim final rule. Public health workers are specifically identified in the interim final rule. If, if the commission. Um, i- if the commission would like, um, I, I would recommend two things. That we not, that we do not hold up the process for what Ms. Steele has brought forward and what I have brought forward. And if the commission would like, Ms. Steele and I can go back into the interim final rule again and take another look and maybe we should concur. Sorry, Ms. Womstead to volunteer you for something, but if you'd like, we can even go through that with the state's attorney. And if Ms. Steele and I are deemed to be incorrect, um, we could include those six folks from the sheriff's office and come back to the board with another request and, and then it's a policy decision on the board. Um, we can certainly do that. But I just, I just want to remind the commission, there's philosophy and there's what's identified in the interim final rule. And that's what Ms. Steele and I went off of. And we knew people weren't gonna like what we had to say. But we're, we're just presenting to you what's defined and what's allowed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ford, Mr. Engen.
When you're writing these guidelines, you can't name five hundred thousand jobs. I mean, you have guidelines and you have to interpret them. And maybe others like these people in sheriff's office, maybe you get another five or ten throughout the, throughout the, uh, group that you should look at too and just see if, if they were required by their job to have face time with people and couldn't work remotely, I think we should look at the people that might affect and see if there's a way that if, if sheriff's departments are included.
Actually, law enforcement officers are included.
Just.
That's correct.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement officer.
So, like, Mr. Ford said, we spent a lot of time trying very hard to find a way to incorporate.
So, I guess I'm in favor of proving what the motion is with the idea that you will take a look and a little bit jobs like that.
And so, the one question I have is, you want us to look at that regarding the admin staff of the sheriff's?
Yes. I think, I think one of the problems will be you have other departments saying their staff also had contact. However much I don't know, I don't know that there's ever been.
And the, the one other department that would have qualified here without a doubt is the Human Service Zone, but we could not include them because they're covered under the administrative rules, the state base, and we cannot provide them money from this, so.
You know, this is a public safety office. You know, it's just, it is, it's a public safety. They're sworn, but those gals are working in a public safety capacity. So I would like the study done.
I'm not arguing.
Okay.
Okay, um, did you want to say something else?
Sure, just.
Sheriff Schneider?
With all due respect, I do, I do agree with Bob that administration support is law enforcement. But, I mean, I'm sure the chief deputy and captain would appreciate me saying this, but I, we, I think that falls within the guidelines that, that I talked about with Ms. Steele, uh, regarding administrative staff at the jail and at the sheriff's office. I, I support that decision more than I support the support staff, uh, decision because, and honestly, those support staff have, they had a lot more contact with the public lately than, than the three administrators.
Okay.
So, if, if you want to consider them, feel free, but, uh, my, my biggest concern is the six support staff.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a motion on the floor right now. And that motion is to go along with the plan that Mr. Ford and Ms. Steele have put together, um, to reimburse those individuals that fit the, the definitions that were put together by the, in ARPA or the, call it the guidelines.
Right, the interim final rule?
The interim final rule, and that would be at an estimated cost of two hundred sixty eight thousand six hundred dollars. So those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And the motion is carried. Um, at this point, Ms. Steele, we will ask you and Mr. Ford probably to work with Ms. Womstead and to look back at the ARPA final rule and see if there, um, is any way that we could fit the, uh, individuals that were in direct public contact on an ongoing basis throughout this, uh, this period that you identified, um, to see if there's a way to reimburse them as well.
And specifically for the sheriff's department?
Okay, I think if you're gonna do it for one department, you gotta do it for all. I'd say, yes, other departments.
There may be other board, and so we may have to end up.
Right.
And that's gonna be the problem once we start going in.
If, if, if it doesn't meet the criteria, can we as a commission make a motion to pay them anyhow and not use ARPA money? We could, looking at what, um, what the cost is gonna be and what's available in our, in our county budget, yes.
Well, if you, if you had, you could argue that it was ARPA and then you didn't end up paying it back in the end.
See, my position is it's public safety office.
Uh, you know, I.
Quote unquote, public safety. And if they fall within that, they should be paid. I understand there may be other departments, but they're not public safety, so.
Well, yeah, but if you have law enforcement officers, but you could get on the line to the Swanson's people too, see, I don't know how far we're gonna.
Yes.
And that line out, and we have law enforcement officers, so. And I appreciate the sheriff volunteering, he is, and Mr. Lloyd's and Mr. Stromberg's, but you guys fall under the definition. I mean, there's.
He doesn't.
He has.
He's an elected official.
He's, okay. The other two gentlemen clearly knew, so then, there's problems of that, so.
But I am a sworn law enforcement officer.
Yeah, yeah, we know that.
Okay, um, moving on, the COVID response team was going to speak on behalf of them.
Madam Chair, this is, this is Tom. I, I'll do that, but really quick, I just, I'm sorry to belabor this, but going back to the premium pay, I, just looking for a little more direction from the commission. So if we look at administrative support in the sheriff's office, what about administrative support for public health? What about administrative support for corrections, juvenile detention?
Wow.
How about, how about PSAP? I mean, my point, Madam Chair, is there, there's going to be an opening for many departments, so.
Yes, please look at that as well.
Okay.
All right.
Thank, thank you for the clarification, Madam Chair. The, the COVID response team did meet, um, on Friday and we have one thing for the board, just, just recommendation, not ax, and not asking the board to do anything today, but, um, pertaining to the mask covering requirements in all county buildings. Um, we, while we are still in high risk category, questions have arisen about when will the commission lift the mask coverings or the facial coverings requirement. Um, so our recommendation is going to be that once the county, on the, on the county health officer's dashboard, once the county has been fourteen consecutive days in the moderate risk or yellow, that the commission revisits the, the facial covering requirement. Um, so, so obviously we're not there yet, but we'll, we'll continue to monitor, monitor it, excuse me. Um, and once we hit that fourteen consecutive day mark in, in moderate risk, we'll, we'll come back to the commission and, and ask for the commission to decide what to do with that.
I think.
If that, if that's okay with the commission.
Yes, I think that would be just fine.
Okay, that's, that's all we have, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much for that group that comes together. It's very beneficial for us in decision making. The next item on the agenda is the Director of Administration, Mr. Ford, you're up.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, uh, two things. The first is a, a, an agreement for professional consulting services with Donahoe and Associates Consulting. This, this is for the Military Installation Resiliency Grant. Um, on October eleventh, the commission did, um, select Donahoe Associates to be the contractor after a competitive bid process. And so, uh, I worked with, um, Ms. Womstead on the contract. She's reviewed it. And so, asking for the commission to approve the contract and for chair's signature.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of Mr. Ford? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve the contract with Donahoe and Associates, along with the chair's signature on it.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Good.
All right. There is no discussion, assuming a roll call vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, the last thing I have for the board's consideration is a change order um, to the state's attorney's COVID office remodel. So, um, the, the lighting in the area that's been remodeled, and Ms. Womstead can correct me if I'm incorrect, um, is inadequate for the staffing. And so, there is a change order in, in the amount of, um, three thousand eight hundred seventy dollars to this project to, to, uh, put in adequate light fixtures for that office area. This is a project that's being funded out of ARPA dollars, so I would, I would suggest if the commission approves the change order, that three, the three thousand eight hundred seventy dollars be funded through ARPA.
I'm sure, Mr. Ford, it's actually being paid up with CARES dollars, not ARPA.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay, so, um, is, is, um, there any discussion? The later you can change order is for which office again?
The state's attorney's office, ma'am.
Okay, and it would be a cost of three thousand eight hundred seventy dollars coming from CARES Act dollars. Okay, what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve the change order in the state's attorney's remodeling project for three thousand eight hundred seventy dollars coming out of the CARES.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have.
Okay, well, can, good luck on the rest of your conference and safe travels home.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. All right, the next item on the agenda is the state's attorney, Ms. Womstead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I have nothing for the board's consideration today, other than thank you for approving the change order. Our staff will definitely appreciate that.
Well, good. We want them to be able to see what they're doing. That's very important. Okay, the next item on the agenda is unfinished and new business. Our first item is the Career Impact Academy Letter of Intent.
No, Chair, I think we.
Oh, I did, sorry. I apologize. I just wanted to whip past that. Okay, committee reports. We will start with Commissioner Paul.
Just had one meeting relative to Grand Sky. Nothing I can report now, but, uh, in the future, I'm hoping to bring information to you. Thank you.
You're not administrative services?
Oh, yeah, I brought that up there.
I did.
Well, at least you had to kick me because I told you to kick me. Yeah, as Commissioner Peach and I, after our meeting, discussed briefly that maybe we're pushing it out too far and we need to talk about the Home Rule Administration or Home Rule Charter at another admin services committee earlier than, than the January, February fourth meeting. So her recommendation is we try to discuss it again at November sixteen, two thirty, which is two weeks from now, which I'm in, I, I will approve of and, uh, indicated that I will advise, uh, Ms. Nelson to set that meeting on November sixteen to two thirty. Put that in your calendar. And Peach, I'll be there. You got it?
Thank you, I, I got it, I got it.
I was looking over here. Okay, yeah. So, and then maybe we'll just strike the January fourth meeting and if we have to, we'll recompete that, but let's take that off our calendar for that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Paul. Commissioner Ross?
About a week and a half ago, MPO meeting. I discussed road projects and everything that are coming up in the near future. Some of them are gonna be put off a little bit longer. Uh, the ad hoc committee is still reviewing the bridge. Uh, those results are supposed to be into the MPO by the end of December, so.
Thank you, anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Engen.
I had one Zoom meeting talking about tax increment financing, that nothing is firm done yet, becoming a commission somewhere along. Uh, and then tomorrow, I'm doing a, I'll end up a tour of the Brumman, Northwood Brumman facility for the Northwood Robotics Team. So we're gonna go out there and look at those wonderful block twenties that are sitting there.
Anything else, Commissioner Ross?
All I have was a library meeting on the twentieth, really nothing to report on that. And then yesterday, uh, because the extension is part of my portfolio, I sat in on interviews for physicians. And so, we started that yesterday and we're going to continue that in the future as well. So, and other than that, I don't really have anything. We have state of the base this coming week. Who's all going to that?
That is on Thursday at seven thirty AM, correct?
Yeah.
And then, um,
uh, on the fifth, CBIC is, is having a legislative tour and we'll be part of that as well, so. That's all I have. They just have the legislators come in and they do the tour of the facility and, um, speaking engagements with them, you know, just to where they are and where they wanna go and hiking support and, and, uh, so it's, um, and a good time for questions and answers, so. It's only an hour and a half, so it won't be, you know.
Okay, and as far as I go, um, I attended the Grand Forks Airport Authority Board meeting last Thursday. Um, there was quite a bit of discussion going on as it was the largest day of passenger departures going out of the Grand Forks Airport for Nashville. Um, the authority board was very, um, frustrated because that same day, uh, two days prior to that, Allegiant Air had made an announcement there would be no air service taking place in December. That was going to be impacting twenty four flights going out of Grand Forks Airport. Um, there were many airports that had their air service, uh, minimized or made less, they, they were informing the airports that they would be having less flights than they had originally planned with Allegiant Air. There were only three airports in the country that were going to have all of their air service from Allegiant Air in December, um, taken away. And Grand Forks Airport was one of them. Um, I believe there is another airport in Ohio that wasn't real far from Cincinnati. I cannot recall the name of the third one. Uh, the board members were very frustrated with that. Uh, uh, the CEO of the airport had been just recently to the Allegiant, um, conference about a month prior and had a very good report from, um, their, the reps that he speaks to and the numbers were looking good. Of course, this big, uh, day was going to be coming in, in November uh, because many residents were going to be going to the hockey game in Nashville. Um, in the meantime, in the letter or the information that was explained to Ryan Reesinger, um, over the phone was stating that, of course, they were having difficulty in getting their new planes. They've been ordering new planes and like anybody waiting for new equipment, it's coming at a longer pace because chips have to go into them and the chips are made in China, Korea, and, um, one other country in the Russian area. And so, um, it's been quite frustrating. Um, Ryan was also, you know, saying, okay, so you're taking air service away from us completely in the month of December. Um, you're telling us that's because of planes, not being able to get new planes by, you know. And in the same breath, two days. And in the same breath, two days ago, I heard you were adding air service to smaller routes like like Fort Lauderdale to. Camp or Fort Lauderdale to Orlando, mainly beach areas getting to a larger airport. Lots of frustration on the Airport Authority Board. Um, lots of frustration because the airport. The aviation companies have consistently gone to the federal government for additional funding when they've been short of dollars, not just at COVID time. But in previous years as well. Um, I don't know how much, well, I don't, I know that there'll be some connections with our Congress, our federal Congress. Um, about this. They they say that the air uh travel is only going to be affecting um the. The December travel. Um, but who knows, they could use the plane as another excuse not getting the planes. Um, by January, February either. Um, I know Ryan was talking to the regional rep again. And that's about where it was left. So there's a lot of frustration when and, you know, the press may have a field day. You you can make nine flights available and fill them all up. One day for a special event going in Nashville, but you can't continue when a majority of those flights were also full. Leaving Grand Forks, going to Las Vegas, um. Las Vegas, Florida and Arizona. So there's a lot of frustration there. Ryan did not hear of this ahead of time. He got a call after someone had received an email or a text. Telling them that they were even that either getting a credit to their uh credit card. Because their flight had been canceled out of Grand Forks or they were given vouchers by Allegiant Air to another. Coming from another airline or coming from another service available in.
And they could go to Fargo.
Fargo, St. Cloud, the cities, wherever. Um, Minot did get some cuts in service, but did not have all of their flights taken away. And so it it really was kind of confusing and one day you're great, the next day you're not great. And so I know that there'll be uh further discussions taking place with Allegiant Air in the future. So that's kind of where that's at. So did you say their their flights were full and then they canceled them?
The whole month of December.
The whole month, the whole, the whole month of December, but I didn't understand that that it was. There were twenty four flights. They had flights, but I didn't know that they were full. There were twenty four flights scheduled well out of Grand Forks and they were all canceled. Not that there was every seats full, full on them, but they were full to a capacity that usually Allegiant says these are gonna continue to go. And I know that one of the board members had a ticket leaving on Allegiant to go to Arizona. And he claimed that every time he was going on to check about uh air capacity or seat capacity in in Fargo. The rates kept going up continuously every day. So what was purchased out of Grand Forks was not even attainable out of Fargo around those days. So there was a lot of frustration and just a lot of very upset um board members. So I know that this isn't going to be the end of that discussion, but if they think they're short of planes now and they're gonna suddenly appear in January. Um, I think half of their equipment could be sitting on a ship somewhere out in the ocean as well. And chips are extremely difficult to get right now. So. We will see. Um, but that's what the report and the construction project is moving forward and doing quite well. And they've got things lined up for into next summer already for uh doing parts of the runway. When they can uh work with Delta and switch flights around, times around, so that they can work on them like maybe. A Saturday, a Sunday and half a Monday or something. But they bring in like eighteen excavators to do this project. They did a similar project in St. Cloud. No, in South Dakota and uh they had pictures of and when they come in with these eighteen excavators. This crew knew that knows exactly whose job is what and it, I guess it happens um very methodically. So it's very well planned and that's the same contractor that we will be using. And so, um. For the road, for the airport, for the runway. For the runway, correct? Who owns the road? County Road Five.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, this year now, um, they, it's going well. We had a great fall. The dirt work is on schedule and. They'll meet their phase one goal by the end of the year. So phase one is to do the dirt work and get the culverts in. Um, and then next year, um, later summer, actually, they probably put the gravel pavement down and make the connection. And then once that loop is made, then then we abandon the old one, so.
So they're still able to use the old county, the current county road path?
Correct. That will still be used all winter and spring and early summer even. There's a, they're doing what's called a surcharge in a low area where they. There's a a a low area that has soft soils. And if the final grade is here, they pile the dirt way up here and they let it sit for. Eight, nine months, so it compacts the soil underground, the existing soil way down here. And then when they're done, they shave off the excess soil and pave it and that's what we're waiting for at this point, so.
Yeah, there is an extra surcharge for that and they weren't very happy about that, but a lot of it had to do with the weather conditions that we've had. And how dry the soil was and your name was mentioned a couple of times of, you know, that they had talked to Zabrels. That they had talked to you and and you were had heard of this before because of course, you know, then the county board, it was a hundred and some thousand dollars. And the county board said, well, so then if it's really moist, do we get money back then? No, it doesn't. So of course, you know, typical that that, you know, they had. You know, I don't think a lot of runway work such as this takes place that's so dramatic or that's so, you know, it's a big job. And so they're, you know, seeing lots of changers come through and um I think they were just not in a good mood that day, but it it's going fine. It really is. And I'll report further and what more I find out about Allegiant Air in the future. I have a feeling that a a couple of the the chair, probably in another individual and um Mr. Riesinger, we visiting. Uh, Allegiant Air once again at their corporate office. So that's all I have to report. Now we will move on to unfinished and new business, the Career Impact Academy Letter of Intent.
Madam Chair, with the permission, the Career Impact Academy, which you approved at the last meeting. Uh, would like uh the chair's signature on the letter. For four hundred thousand dollars.
They have to have, they have to have these letters signed so that they can uh use, get those to the state.
So my question is, is. If that doesn't, they don't get the money, the the ten mil, they don't, I'm sure they will, but if they don't.
They'll get the match of whatever they're at.
If they get eight, they get the match for eight.
Yeah, yeah. If they they wanna get it up to ten million dollars because that's the cap that they can get to match.
Okay.
But if they get six or they get eight.
No.
Before they would even give the grant. No, no, no. It's it's dollar for dollar.
Yep.
Commissionering Polk, excuse me.
I'll make a motion to uh. Have the chair sign the letter, but I think we should check off for the term of one time payment.
Sure, I think they would be.
That's what we're getting. It's not the infirmities. We're not. And they committed to any more payments because we have plenty more money.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
But I'll make that motion. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? All right, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The next item is the Burnham Boiler and Mechanical Agreement.
Madam Chairman, with the permission, you have approved this already. Here's the agreement. It has been reviewed by the state's attorney, just needs the chair's signature.
Okay, so we do, do we need a uh a motion on that for a signature then? I think we should. Okay. So moved, is there a second to that motion? Okay, it has been moved by Commissioner Ross and seconded by Commissioner Engen, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Next, we move on to correspondence. There is a um. A letter about proposed roadway improvement project.
Madam Chairman, this is permission that is just information.
Okay, so we have received an informational letter about the Grand Forks, Washington Street grade update, isn't it? So Grand Forks Street north and First Avenue north will be updated.
Surreal Road Bridge.
Under the bridge.
All the way to Fifth, right?
So that'll be beyond university?
Uh, yeah, I think they have an option for that. Yes, in a nutshell.
Okay, so it'll be reduced, the four lanes will be reduced to two lanes in each direction, um, like they've done kind of on Highway Two.
Every summer on Summer Road.
Great, great. Um, so this is just informational. Okay, is there any anything else for the good of the order? If not, does someone choose to make, so move, is there a second?
Second.
Assuming a roll call vote, all those who give your motions, we can have a say in that.
Aye.
The mo- the motion is.